So I'll call the, call the meeting to order. Did that come through? I had something on my screen. Okay, alright. So I'll call the meeting to order. So the minutes and agenda having been previously provided, is there any discussion or correction to either of them? Hearing none, none without objection, they are approved. So we will get started with the very first item on the agenda. Supposed to start at seven oh five, but I see Enos is here. So Enos, if you can unmute, we will go ahead and kick you off. See who's joining. Oh, that's just mine. Okay, so. Enos is, you know, I'd sent an email to the three of you inviting you to the, to the meeting this evening just to talk to the zoning commission. You're aware last week that the zoning commission had voted to pursue the investigation into zoning the remaining nine townships, the nine townships that are currently not zoned. And that was actually a combined motion with applying an ag zone to all of those nine townships. NICOG, the North Iowa Area Council of Governance weighed in on that and said that they recommend that we not take that approach, that we make at least a reasonable effort at assigning accurate zoning to those things that are clearly obvious, not ag. So we will, we have on our agenda later, after we hear from the three supervisors, to revisit that, that vote from last week. So we'd like to give an opportunity for you, Enos, you got about fifteen minutes here just to let us know what your thoughts are on the direction we're leaning with regard to zoning the other, or applying the zoning regulations to the other nine townships and the assignment of zoning. What kind of considerations you think we should be aware of?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
I feel that I have no problem keeping as much of it as ag as possible. But if it's to keep NICOG happy, if it's industrial, commercial, and it's been there forever, and like the cement plant west to north on a hundred and five, it's been there since probably the seventies and it's gonna mean, it's gonna always be a cement plant to come in and I'm sure that the assessor has that right now as commercial. I have no problem with doing that. My attitude on this thing is keep it as simple as possible. And if you're in doubt, you use ag. The other thing is Jeff, you put together two pages of parcels. And I got from the assessor's office because they don't look at our zoning whatsoever in determining what that land is used for. They make their own determination on the majority of the use of that land. So when you go down on them, the two, the two sheets that you've got, and I started checking some of them, like the first two are wetlands. And you're saying to change it to commercial recreation, which is what we have in the zoning right now, but yet the assessor's office has them as a agricultural. So my attitude is if the assessor's got it as a agricultural, you leave it as a agricultural. Then the next one down is, the third one down is a building site. And that should be designated as CR because it's a campground on Sorboles. But because of the majority of that ground is agricultural, that thing is classified as agricultural. So don't go in there and make it a commercial recreation district because you're gonna upset the apple cart. In other words, follow the assessors with what they've done as far as how they have zoned this stuff. And don't vary from that too much. If you go down to Happy Times, granted, that thing is zoned commercial because the majority of them parcels that he's got in a campground are used for campgrounds and they're, and that's what it is. It's not, it's, in other words, the majority of that parcel is not ag. And he's not gonna have a problem with that because he's already zoned through the assessor or he's, he's done it through the assessors, commercial. And then we gotta make sure we get them right because down we go to the next one and we got BS, which is building site, and then designate as IH scrap processing. That's not where that junkyard is over there. That parcel is Northern Natural Gases Station over there. We cannot make those kinds of mistakes. We have to get together with the assessor and have them help us with these parcels to show exactly what is what. And I think that it said at the top here, you kinda went through Beacon and kinda looked at this stuff and it was obvious. Well, we can't, we, we have to go back in there and Northern Natural Gas, that station over there, it's zoned as commercial, so leave it commercial. But if there's any doubt whatsoever, leave it as ag. Do not add any new classifications. Do exactly what's being done in the zoning in the three townships that are zoned right now. There's problems in Heartland with some of the zoning that happened back in oh eight or oh nine when it was put together. And that stuff has to get corrected, but that could be done down the road. In other words, they got commercial recreational over west of the interstate, straight west of me. And there's all kinds of parcels over there that are zoned commercial recreation because at that time there was a drag strip or a racetrack going in that never went in. That needs to get changed back to ag, just no two ways about it. But that can be done down the road and later. That is not something that you're going to address at the present time. So my attitude is if it's obvious and you're in line with what the assessor has it appraised as, then do it that way. If you're in doubt or things could change or they're in the process of changing, kinda like the quarry west of town with Harris's, we don't know whether that thing, as far as I'm under the impression, they're done hauling out of there, but that could change. So my attitude is if you're in doubt, leave it as ag. We can always go in, like Matt Duvey said in your meeting, I think it was last week, you can always go in and change it later. That's kinda where I'm coming from this, but you gotta work with the assessor's office and get these things accurate. And they do, and they can, and they can print out a sheet that shows every parcel that's under industrial, every partial that's under it, commercial, the whole nine yards. And then the obvious ones, you go in and you make those changes. Because let's face it, the cement plant west to north, it's probably never gonna change.
Right.
Does that make sense?
If we use it, yeah. So you're, you're, just to summarize then, you're saying use a default as ag with exception of those areas that are obviously commercial or industrial campground, et cetera. But verified through the land use codes that the assessor's office has.
That's right. So you don't end up going in there and changing Sorboles to a commercial recreational when it's ag? Cause that's gonna upset the apple cart.
Yeah, the campground would be commercial recreational. I don't know how much of the, I, I haven't.
Jeff, the whole thing is ag because the majority of the property is agricultural land. Therefore, they have done, the whole works is ag when you click on it.
Well, the land use code is probably ag in ninety percent of the county. But as far as the, the campground that he's got there, what percentage of the parcel is campground versus ag use? I guess that, that would be.
And when I click on the campground, it shows up as ag.
So Enos, can I speak in?
Yeah, go ahead.
So what, what you're saying is don't screw with it right now. If we need to divide parcels up or make different maps later on that show us more accurately, more of the accurate uses of the actual Worth County ground, we can do that later on. But for the task of zoning and getting this through right now, less is more.
That's right. It keeps you from making mistakes. The stuff that's obvious, do it, but don't anticipate that Sorboles Campground is a commercial recreational area. Cause when you click on it, unless I did it wrong today, it shows up as ag because the majority of that parcel is agricultural and they go in the assessor's office by what the majority of that parcel is at, at the present time. And I think you should match up with the assessor. Because if I came to a meeting and I owned Sorboles Campground and I looked at that and seen that it's now becoming commercial recreational and I knew that it's all been classified ag in the past, I'd be having some questions as to why you did that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, you're saying because the, the parcel is actually, it's got split use. And you're saying that.
No, it does not have.
Well, it does. I'm, I'm, I'm looking at it right now. There's a campground, very clearly a campground in that parcel on the bottom, on the, I don't know, maybe bottom quarter of, of the parcel. I mean, you, you can, you can see the campers there in, in the GIS. Above them, probably two thirds to three quarters of the rest of the parcel appears to be crop land. So in that case, because it's, it's, it's a combined usage of that parcel with the majority of it being ag. And I think it, it would be appropriate to be ag.
It says, when I click on, when I click on the purple section and the purple sections are building sites, which is the campground, and I go down below, it says class A, that's ag, Sorbo Farms.
That's the, that's the land, that's the land use designation for tax purposes.
That's right.
There is, right. And, and I mean, we're, we're arguing over somewhat of a moot point because I agree with you. If the majority of that parcel is ag, then it should be ag. But at the same time, I think we have to be accurate and say, he is operating a campground on that parcel. There is no dispute of that fact. Now, I don't have an issue with it being zoned as ag as, as we get this stuff going. But I, I don't think that we can be accurate and say there's no campground there just because it's not being taxed as such.
But accuracy is gonna take time and not one meeting.
I'm not, Todd, Todd, I'm not suggesting that we should zone that, that way. I'm agreeing that zoning it as ag is fine. I take issue with the fact of saying there's no campground there because there's clearly a campground there.
And if somebody wants to change that down the road, they can go ahead and change it, but right now classify the thing as ag. That's what I'm saying.
Right. Anybody else have questions for Enos?
Did that make sense to everybody, what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
Oops, sorry, I was muted for a second. Enos, I got a question for you.
Gotcha.
We, we, you know, we, we deem some are obvious, not ag, they're commercial.
Yep.
But, and like you said, if there's any question, your opinion is to leave it as ag.
Yep.
And I'll use the Harris Quarry West of Town, for example, that's in the process of switching. At what point, if we assume a parcel is commercial, but it's not, will that get us in trouble? Or get you in trouble?
I, I'm not sure if it'll get us in trouble or not. I guess my attitude for right now is whatever the assessor has that listed as, go with that. And then it can always get changed later if it is no longer commercial or industrial or whatever it is. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
In other words, we're following pretty much what the assessors, assessor is saying. This is what we, we feel it is at the present time.
Okay, it's a good starting point.
Yep.
And if it's ag, the same thing there, leave it as ag. Don't change it because you think something's coming down the road.
Yeah, like a racetrack?
Yeah, it never showed up. Or a drag strip, I can't remember which one it was, it's been so many years ago. So any other questions for me?
We've got another three or four minutes here before AJ is scheduled, so. Anybody have anything else? For Enos?
So Enos, as far as our, as far as our motion last week, do you feel that needs to be changed at this point? Cause it almost sounds like we're pretty much in line with what your thoughts were for a starting point.
I think it needs to, I think we should start off with the initial one of if it's commercial, if it's industrial and it's been that way for years and it's gonna stay that way. I think that stuff should be marked out on those townships, which is exactly what I picked up from NICOG that they also agree with. In other words, get it as accurate as you can get it. You're not gonna get it perfect. So when you're in doubt, leave it what it is and like the assessor says it is. And you can always fix it later. Does that make sense? In other words, if you do a complete, if you do a complete agricultural deal on the whole nine counties, I think NICOG is gonna come in and say, well, we know it's not that way. But if you go in there and you set up the commercial and the industrial and whatever, exactly the way it is, that where they've been there for a long time, they're gonna come in and take a look at those maps and go, okay, yeah. They don't know what's in that township.
Right.
But they're, they're gonna know that it's not, you ain't got nine townships without any commercial or industrial, you know?
So for our purposes, you know, to, for countywide zoning in all townships to follow the current in place zoning regulations and rules and to follow the assessors guidelines for current zoning.
Well, it wouldn't be the assessors' current guideline, it wouldn't be the assessors' current guidelines for zoning because the assessor has no zoning guidelines, what Enos is suggesting, I believe. And what is that we would use the, the assessors, the assessor has assigned a land use code to all of these properties. And that land use code is used for tax purposes. That quarry west of town, as an example, has a land use code of, of non-crop land.
Right. But using, using their current land use codes with our ag default when we're in question. That's pretty much what I heard.
And our zoning has like C, C1, C2, C3. So when it comes, and they're just gonna have it down as commercial. But you know, if it's a, if it's a campground, there's no reason you can't do a C dash R where it's commercial recreational district. That's basically what it is. But if you wanna do just commercial on it, go ahead. You're staying in line with what the assessor's saying. In other words, if you look at our zoning, we've got a lot of different, there's a lot of different ways that there's zoning, you know?
Yeah, we, we would have to, yeah, we would have to, I mean, there, there isn't one that's just.
Jeff, you cut out.
Like.
I think we lost it, Jeff.
Hello?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yep. Okay. Um, so I was saying that there's, the zoning ordinance has the three commercials, C1, C2, and CR. So we would have to assign it to one of those three. Likewise, industrial has to be either industrial light or industrial heavy.
Yep. So, yeah, don't change any of your codes right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, well, we've got, it's twenty-one after, so we've got AJ is online now. Are you, can you unmute AJ?
Hello, gentlemen.
Hi AJ. So again, we invited you here to give us your thoughts on what you think we should do with regard to zoning and assignment of zoning classifications.
Um, obviously, I think we should get to the twelve townships, the entire county. Include, which basically include the whole county. And when we get to that point, that's when we take, take this board and expand it. We need to get representation to the rest of the county. Um, so I don't know how that would work for sure, but I think we should get up to probably seven members and maybe break up this group a little bit that's here. I know David's on two different boards with the Board of Adjustment and the Planning and Zoning. So maybe we could get him to one board. And then Todd or Justin could do whatever, being they only live a few miles apart, representing the same area, so to speak. And get some representation that would cover, you know, one person approximately per two townships. But this way they could cover other areas of the county. And as far as getting started, yeah, we want to just, like to get that process done. And then, um, it's obvious, there's some things out there that are gonna be, some areas that are just gonna be switched in zoning, whether they're commercial or light industrial or whatever, but most everything, nothing's really gonna change. It just needs, the areas just need to be specified, I guess, of what's there. Um, cause there's a lot of ag land that's just gonna stay ag land out there in the country and then some residential, it's gonna stay that way, so.
So with regard to what the commission had voted last week was to apply a blanket ag to everything. And NICOG said that, that we should not do that, that they would recommend against that. And that we should take a reasonable attempt at assigning things accurately, particularly for the obvious things, which would require us to, to revisit that decision, which we have on our agenda tonight after we hear from the three of you. What are your thoughts on that topic?
Um, I, I understand why it would be done. Um, but also I don't, I kinda take NICOG's information and, and opinion on this stuff very strict, I guess, or I, I respect their opinion because they've done this a lot, done this with a lot of communities everywhere. And I just don't wanna see this get drug out or any harder than it has to be. Um, so I mean, if there's just a general basic way we can get, you get everything zoned and like say, then get representation from other areas would be, would be ideal to me. And I, I don't quite think a blanket is the way, but I'm not, you know, I'm kinda using NICOG's information and, and respecting their, their knowledge on this whole process.
So hit the obvious things and everything else ag?
I would say so, yes. And then if there's anything in between, once it's all established, then we could go back and be visited at that time. Well, cause honestly, I don't think a lot of stuff is gonna change because obviously nothing is zoned. But with tax classifications, if everybody, if somebody's on a commercial property, they're already paying commercial tax. Their ag land's gonna stay the same, your residential lands are gonna stay the same. Alls it is, is putting a, a layer on the website saying that this is commercial, commercially zoned area, which for now would just include those parcels. If people wanted to buy parcels next to them, that's ag land and, and expand their business or the rock quarry or whatever, then obviously that process would be taken care of down the road, so.
So AJ, what did you think of Enos's approach of trying to use the assessor's coding for our beginning point of assigning zoning? Um, just to get us started. So then maybe what you're saying is after we get some representation, after it passes countywide zoning, then we get some representation from each township to actually start fine tuning the parcels and the zoning and, and what's going on with people from them areas?
Yeah, yeah, I would recommend that. Just, um, like I say, a lot of things are just gonna be flat obvious what they are. So, um, yeah, and, and the assessors have already got this stuff, a lot of the stuff established, so. Um, yeah, that would be good to use them as a guide, I guess, to, to go through and make sure everything is properly zoned.
Is that something that Cindy can just, I'm not sure how that works. Is that's just something that Cindy already has in, in like a line form or in maps or does Cindy have that easily accessible?
Yeah, it, it's already there and I've talked to Cindy about it. She can run the reports for us. Uh, when you go in, when you, when you go into GIS, you can see those as well. If you open up the, the layers and click on land use, that's her land use codes. Those are that, that list of codes that I had provided in advance of last week's meeting that showed all of those, uh, there's probably three dozen different land use codes that they have that's assigned out there. And so I, you had asked AJ his thought on, on Enos's suggestion. I don't think AJ was online at the time, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll paraphrase and Enos wave at me if, if this is not accurate. But you had said that, you know, we use it, you know, a default as ag, but hit the, the obvious things that we know are there, have been there. You use the cement plant as an example. Um, those would be exceptions, but once we identify those exceptions, run that through the filter with the assessor's land use tax codes to make certain that there's no mistakes on those things. And so we would identify those exceptions for commercial or industrial, uh, commercial recreation. Uh, and then everything else would be ag.
Yeah, that sounds, sounds about right to me and sounds fairly simple. You know, let's use the information that's already established and keep this process easy. So yeah, I, I agree with that. And, uh, keep this process easy. So yeah, I, I agree with that.
Other questions for AJ? AJ, any final comments?
No, I appreciate what you guys are doing. Appreciate all the time you volunteered to put into this, so, so thank you for everything, guys, and, uh, like I say, we respect your guys' decisions on what you do and, uh, hopefully we can get this process done as easily as possible.
Okay. Well, I know, uh, Mark has been online with us. We're a little bit early for his time, but, um, if you're okay, Mark, we're ready to hear from you.
Took time to, uh, watch the zoning meetings and stuff and what you guys done. I think, you know, the process you used and your motion made was probably spot on. And the reason for that is, is I think if you go to all the work to do what you really, Jeff, what you want to do, you're under the assumption that this will pass with nobody complaining about it. Um, you know, so far my comments probably have been 10 to one against this period. Um, but I do think if you're going to do it, I think you do it as simple as you can and, and if it passes through, then your work really starts. And that's where you go back and make sure you designate everything the proper way. And, uh, I think you got it right. Cindy's got, uh, you know, everything's already assessed at a certain, you know, it's either commercial or it's industrial or it's ag or, you know, she's got all the assessment schedules and I think you'd want zoning to follow that pretty closely. Uh, on how, and how it would be, how it would be assessed, you would probably zone it the same way.
So once again, use the, um, assessor's land use tax codes as the, as the guide for, uh, assignment of a zone. Industrial, commercial, what have you.
Yep. And like I say, I would probably wait to do that after you knew for sure that the zoning passed and, uh, you know, otherwise you're doing a lot of legwork that could be for nothing. That's what's happened in the past. There's been a lot of objection to zoning and I don't think that's going to disappear overnight.
Well, I think part of the, I mean, when we say that the, the rules, the zoning rules apply to the zone, to the, uh, nine townships. Um, by saying the rules apply, we actually have to apply the rules. I'm all for making a, um, you know, a, just a, a reasonable best effort upfront, which that's what I was suggesting last week. Recognizing there's going to be a whole bunch of stuff that's going to get missed, that's going to have to get readdressed at some point in the future. But as NiCOG has, uh, has also pointed out, um, it's not appropriate to say the rules apply and everything is ag. Because we know that not everything is ag. There's, there's very big obvious things, you know. Enos pointed out the cement plant that has been there for, you know, over 20 years. Um, it's in, it's continued operation. It's clearly not ag. So I think it is appropriate when we tell the folks that we recommend zoning across the county. And here's what the assignments would initially look like. I think that's being more accurate for them. Um, for people to be able to look at and say, okay, well, here's what zoning is going to mean, rather than showing just a blanket ag over everything.
You know, as right now, that's up to you guys. Like again, what I've said is I think you'd be going to a lot of legwork with the assumption that this is going to pass and, you know, more unlikely it probably could. That's, you know, that's either here or there now, but number one, I think you should get a thought from a lot of people out there. Right now, it's a small group of people that are running this show. You know, it's just there. I know for a fact, there's a lot of people over here and I've got the largest amount of townships and large one, small towns that my district's in. And the people I've heard from again, at least 10 to one have said, what are you doing? And, you know, I'm just, I'm just going along right now because I, there's really not much I can say or do to change anybody's mind. But, uh, you know, right now, a lot of people are not real happy about this. And that's, I'm just telling you honest truth and that's my feelings on it. I think the board, you guys did the right thing. You made the right motion. I, I wouldn't be afraid to have you bring that to the board of supervisors and we would discuss it at that point.
Well, the, the motion was.
I'm in an argument with you.
Yeah.
I'm just telling you my thoughts, so don't keep pushing arguments. Your board did the right thing.
Well, I just wanted to clarify.
I understand what you're saying. I, I made my point. So let's not just keep going over and over this. You need to trust your board and work with your board. This is what they'd like to bring to the supervisors and I think that's where it needs to go. That's what we're on here for.
Anybody else have anything from Mark? All right. Well, thank you for your time, Mark. I appreciate any final comments.
Oh, thank you much.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is the discussion and decision on the reconsideration of the ag blanket zoning vote from last week. That was actually one part of a two-part motion. Um, I will make a motion that we reconsider that in two parts.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna object to that again. As we established, you know, it may be legal for you to make a motion. But it was also frowned upon and my opinion is the motion needs to come from the body, not the chairman. If that's what you were doing is actually making a motion.
Well, first of all.
Question, I apologize. Maybe that's, that's different, but.
The, the agenda item is the discussion on that vote from last week.
Mm-hmm.
I was suggesting that we divide that question instead of a two-part question. That we divide it, um, and Robert's rules does specify that a question that has two parts can be divided so that each part can be voted on individually. I was suggesting that we take that approach.
It sounded like making a motion. I'm sorry.
Yep. And as far as the chair making a motion, the chair clearly as a member of the board has the authority, has the, the, the permission, if you will, to make motions. It's not commonly done, but on small boards, it is done. And it is acceptable to be done in order for business to continue to progress. It's not a question of whether they, um, are frowned upon or dissuaded from. They're either authorized to do so or they're not. And Robert's rules is clear that they are.
It's clear that it's accepted, but it's just as also clear that it's frowned upon and not usually done. So it's not completely clear, but I understand your point.
I, I don't think Robert's rule says that, Todd.
Well, I think it does, but okay.
Yeah.
My feeling.
If, if he'd like to make a motion, just let him make a motion.
Yep.
It can die for lack of second.
Right. Well, I think we have a lot more discussion on it yet, but.
I would, uh, I guess I'd like to hear Dana, what, what her thoughts are, if she has any, yes, because we were all there last week.
I'm still playing catch up a little bit to be completely honest, so.
Sorry, I didn't mean to throw you on the spot.
I, I don't have much to add to this yet.
Okay.
Dana, did you get a chance to, did you review last week's, um, our last meeting at all?
Um, I reviewed the minutes, yes, but that's about it.
Okay. I think there's a lot of content in there to catch you up with speed there if it that adds to a lot of.
The videos.
Yeah, the.
You talking about the video, Todd?
Yeah. There's just a lot of, there was a lot of thoughts and comments and shared discussion in that, just like there was tonight. As I'm sure there'll be more when we get to public.
Yeah, it's been a crazy week for me, so I apologize. I haven't fully caught up on it, so.
I'll, I'll just add some discussion. It sounds like the supervisors all maybe not all in favor of countywide zoning, but it sounds like, uh, it's something that's coming in the future anyway. And it sounds like we need to be tactful and careful. Moving forward, the common thing that I got from all three of them is in my words, less is more. Don't, don't upset the fruit basket. I think, uh, Enos said that. I mean, it sounds like a lot of them thought the assessors pretty much had the work done for us with their land use codes to get this kicked off if we were to not just use a general ag blanket, but as an ag default. It takes a lot of the work out of it for us, like Smaby said. It's already done.
Well, but.
A lot of it's already done from the starting point.
Did you look at the land use codes that the assessor's office gave us, Todd?
I looked at some of them before, when you and me talked before that first meeting.
So I posted them out there on the shared drive. Um, let me, let me share my screen. Uh, screen sharing is disabled. Okay. Well, I can't share my screen, but if you go to the shared drive. Um, pull it up here. The very first one in the list under the zoning, um, folder is county land use codes. And there's 60 county land use codes. County land use codes, uh, forest reserve A, forest reserve C, forest reserve R, forest reserve AR, that's for ag, commercial. Um, urban residential. Ag residential, and then there's slough, there's nursing homes, slough, forest cover. Non-crop land, native prairie. I mean, there, there's 60 different ones. Not all of them have the A, A R C or R associated with them. So, and even those that have the, um, the C are not necessarily C, but more appropriate, um, industrial. So I think.
This is Mark. I think you can share your screen now if you, you would like I switch the setting a little bit. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. So let me share. So this is the list I was talking about. So we can key off of some of these. Um, but there's others that, um, they don't have that. And there's nothing in here that shows industrial. Um, I know the, um, yeah, the gravel pits as an example. Those are listed as, um, NCR. Uh, where's NCR? I don't even sit on their list. NPC. Yeah, I'll have to get with Cindy. Uh, but anyway, my point is some of these things, um, the gravel pits as an example are clearly industrial, not commercial. Uh, so I think we do leverage this, but I don't think that we can just you know, tell NiCOG to create a map based solely on the land use tax codes. I think we have to give them a, a set of logic that says start everything as ag and then make exceptions based on the following. And, you know, we, we can give them, um, these codes. But everywhere where it says C, we're going to have to look and see, was it actually C1, two or three, or is it actually industrial?
How about a different idea? How about we use the current land use codes as our starting point? And anything that isn't designated is default ag. And then we can worry about fine tuning it all later, just as was shared with us tonight. I mean, isn't that getting us land designation and it's, it's a getting a start and that should also satisfy NiCOG because now we have current established research criteria for why we are assigning zoning very appropriately for our needs right now. And getting the ball.
Once again, we don't have a single commercial zone. We have three commercial zones.
We don't have to break it down in three zones right now. It can be commercial.
Todd, that's, that, we have to break it down that way because that's what our, our zoning ordinance calls them.
But does that have to be done today or next year? That was the, that was kind of the talk.
It, it, we have to give NiCOG and the public the initial zone assignments. The zone assignments have to be based on the ordinance that's in place today. We're not making changes to the ordinance. And so if the ordinance today breaks it down between three different kinds of commercial and two kinds of industrial, then those are the codes that we have to use. We can't make up a different code.
Like what Enos said, on your maps, it's going to show up as commercial. It's not going to break it down into codes for now. If they want to know farther, they can get into those maps and see if it breaks it down farther. So it's already done. Isn't it?
Already done. No. The, the land use codes are completely separate from zoning. If you go into, um, Beacon. Let me pull that up. You go into Beacon and you turn on zoning. Zoom out to. Beacon going to cooperate with me? No, it's not loading right now. But the zoning, when you turn that on, it shows if it's C1, C2, et cetera. Because the zones are assigned based on the zoning definitions that are in the ordinance. And when we assign zones, whether it be this first time or three years from now, we have to use the zone definitions and designations that are in the ordinance.
Yep.
And so if, if it says it's commercial, we can't just assign it a generic commercial. We have to designate it as C1, C2, CR, or in some cases, it's not commercial at all. It's industrial, in which case we have to zone it as industrial, light or industrial heavy. Now, like I said, we use the land use tax codes to make certain that, you know, if they say it's ag, i- i- then it's ag. But if it's a you know, cement plant or gravel pit or scrapyard, that's not ag. It's one of these other five.
So if I'm understanding, you want to go in and, and get everything, you want to hammer everything out and get it right?
No, no, no. I have never said, I have never said I want to hammer everything out. No, no, no. I have never said, I have never said I wanna hammer everything out and get it all right. I, I, I have said consistently since last week. We should hit the big obvious ones, which is exactly the same thing that NiCog told us afterwards. We should hit the big obvious ones. We are required to do a best efforts. State law calls it due diligence. That's all I'm advocating, is the same thing that Ena said. We start with the default that everything is ag, except for these big obvious things that we know that are there. And we leverage the land use codes that the assessor has to help us out with that. But I'm not saying that we scrub through everything. That would be ridiculous. I didn't say that last week. That's not what was in the proposal. And again, I think we need to divide the question of. Should we apply the rules countywide to these other nine, you know, to include these other nine townships? Make that one question. And then the other question is. What approach do we decide that we should take on the initial zone assignments? So that we can tell NiCog. Do X, Y, Z for the initial set of maps that we wanna show the public. Cause I, I don't think it's fair to tell the public, we're gonna initially zone everything ag and then turn around in a couple of months. And, and say, nope, 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 start making a bunch of changes. Plus, as I pointed out in another document, that's contrary to our responsibility according to the law. The regulations that says we're supposed to apply due diligence. Which is why I voted against that combined vote last week. Nobody else has opinions? What are your thoughts or um reactions to? NiCog's recommendation and Enos and I guess AJ's concurring recommendation on approach? What are your thoughts on that approach? You did hear Enos and AJ say that they take. NiCog's recommendations very seriously, right? And NiCog has said, if we. Continue with the approach that was voted on last week, NiCog is going to recommend to the supervisors. Not to approve that, not to go that way when it gets to them, if we take that approach. Which means the time that we would spend between now and then would be wasted because it would either die then. In which case the zoning would not happen. And wind ordinance would apply only to the three zone townships, or it would get kicked back to us. To start this conversation over again.
As is, the public meeting next Tuesday, your public comment. And then we can choose at that time to move forward as is, or to amend and do something different.
So what approach should we tell the public then? So that takes us to. One of the other uh items on the agenda, the next item on the agenda. Uh, I can get my screen to work here. What's are these uh, public hearing agenda items? What do we tell them is the um? Uh where is it?
Exactly what we voted on.
What?
Yeah, exactly. Currently, we voted on this and that's where we're at. We're looking for public input.
That everything be zoned as ag?
As a default, yes.
Helps us and the public. Help me understand, that approach helps us and the public um knowing. That it's not gonna go forward with the supervisors with that approach. And that it is in fact contrary to what two of the three supervisors just told us tonight.
And this is in complete concurrence with what one of the supervisors said. My real question is, I would like to get through the public meeting. I would like to hear from the public. I would like to take what they have. If we have a meeting and. People show up and two hundred and ninety-nine of them are against countywide zoning, I'm kinda inclined to let it drop. If it's a fifty-fifty deal, maybe we need to revisit this. And then, yes, two weeks later, we'll have another public meeting that might have changes in it.
Personally, I need to do a little bit more research and ask some questions about the difference between the uh land use codes and how they're set up. And uh how we're gonna apply it. I think I need to maybe ask Enos a couple more questions. I think he was on to something and. Somehow you and I are not uh flowing our communication from how to get from point A to point B. I don't know, was the difference of opinion or just that I don't understand? So I need to do more research, so. That's where I'm at.
Well, just. Again, one thing to keep in mind is the land use codes are for tax purposes. Zoning is for management of development.
Yep, but the, but my understanding was the supervisors asked to try to keep them aligned, at least for now while we're getting started. And we can fine tune it later, and that's my hangup. It, it, I feel like we're trying to do too much right now, and that's my gut say that's wrong. So I need to do more.
I'm, I'm concurring. I'm agreeing with that approach. I'm saying that they should be aligned. The only, the only place where I, I take a fork in the road. Is because zoning and tax use codes are two different places. Tax use codes can use a C for commercial. And apply that for tax purposes to all manner of, of, of um properties and uses. But zoning divides that into five different things. And so as soon as you use the C from tax use code and say, well, that's not ag. Then you have to assign it one of those five things, because that's what the ordinance requires.
I agree with you on that. And I get what you're saying. My whole point is, is there's a whole bunch of those tax codes. And if you brought that, would you mind putting that back up on the screen?
Sure.
So. And, and this is, this is my, just my opinion when looking at these tax codes. If I look at forest reserve, A, C, B, A, R, okay, those are all ag. Growing trees up. So they are not, you know, they fit fine under the A one. Tons of these fit fine under the A one. But you're.
These, the AC, the ACR and AR are the codes that um Enos was referring to. In particular, the, the C.
And, and I get that, and our default is for ag. Forest reserve is growing trees. So that's, that's where I'm coming a little bit of the fact of, and I'm kinda trying to get the, I'm trying to put this together for both of you. In the fact of if it is a church, it is a church, if it is a commercial property, it is a commercial property. We have to go the next step and say it's commercial A, commercial B, commercial C, or commercial D. Uh, is that what I'm hearing from both of you?
Yes. Yeah, that's, well, I, I can't speak for Todd. That's what I'm saying is, you know, if it says it's commercial. Then according to the ordinance, we have to assign it a commercial one, commercial two, or commercial recreation. Zone, because those are the zone assignments that are available in the ordinance.
I'm gonna stop you there. Just because the tax base defines it as C, commercial. Does that mean it automatically has to be zoned commercial, or can it default to A one, i.e. the race track? We know that there's stuff out there that's taxed incorrectly.
Yes, I, I think, you know, where I started was. We can look at the, I mean, physically look at the map of it. The giant gravel pits that encompass a dozen different parcels. We know those carry a non-crop land C designation for tax use. But more importantly, we can see it's a gravel pit. We can verify with the assessor.
How many gravel pits are you saying we have in our county?
There's two that I'm aware of.
Okay.
There's hundreds.
Well, and that's where, they're probably, that, that's where I'm saying is, is you, you know. Keenan's quarry was a gravel pit, now it's a recreational area. And there's Randall's Pond, and you know, I can just think of a bunch of different one, one.
I'm talking, I'm, I'm talking about Falkstone and BMC aggregates.
Okay, so those are actively, you look at them, drive fast, there's equipment sitting on that ground and they're making ground, right?
Yep, same thing with the cement plant that Enos pointed out, west of town.
So if it is a gravel pit that's not active, that the tax says is a gravel pit. We're not gonna necessarily call it a gravel pit.
Right.
Are we on the same page there?
Yes.
So now, perfect example, junkyard. You got one on the north side of Kentset, one on the south side of Kentset. Are either one of those within city limits?
Uh, I believe that both of them just outside.
Okay, and that's the thing that we need to make sure we double check, like all of the Manly rail site. Where does those town of Manly stop? You know, is the Sukup building in the city of Manly, or is the Sukup building outside the city of Manly?
It, it, so the terminal itself. And the Sukup building are within the Manly two mile territorial zone. The two mile terr-
So we don't have to worry about them, right? I mean, we know what's in and what's out of us. So other than wind farms, really, how many commercial properties do we really have in the county if you look at it of? Kind of blinders of what's truly commercial.
Yeah, it, that cut out on me. I'm gonna go to computer audio. My phone's cutting out again.
Yep.
And so let me see if I can switch this. But sure. If I go about this.
You're, you're just barely.
Uh, let's see.
That's better.
Okay, um, I don't know what's going on with my phone. Um, yeah, so like I said, some of that stuff was cutting out on me, so I didn't catch everything, but. Again, just to recap, what my suggestions has been is capture the big obvious stuff that's in operation. Um, everything else is ag. The big obvious stuff that's in operation. I, I think it's only fair to show people that that's what these places would be.
And, and how many big obvious do we have?
Well, again, I think there's, there's three scrapyards that come to mind. There's one west. There's uh Wild Horse and Bucks. Uh, there's another Bucks, but he's inside Manly uh zone. Um, there's Falkstone and BMC aggregates. Um, and there's a couple of um campgrounds. There's um. Uh, there is a couple of other areas that would not be ag that are being used for um power stations. Uh, I think those get uh industrial light, I think is what, what they fall into. Um, but anyway, it's, it's just that handful of stuff. The, the list, you know, there's two pages. Of stuff that you're, you're looking at. Um. We go through and verify that stuff through the assessor to make certain that things aren't um. Aren't being captured inappropriately, but. As I said, BMC aggregates, you know, they account for like a dozen or more individual parcels. That's what makes that list so big. It's not saying that there's two pages worth of these kinds of properties. It's two pages of parcels. And like I said, BMC aggregate, you know, they, they take up half a page when you list parcel by parcel.
The parcels that they own, but are they currently in the process of being mined?
They are being mined and/or they have some property that is. From a tax purpose classified as commercial, but they're farming it.
So if you're farming, you know, that's the perfect example. If you're farming it, it's not commercial.
Well, that's one of those where it's gonna take more work to, to get into, so. If we default those to ag, that's fine. Um.
That's what I, you know, that's where I was getting on this, you know, is a quarry a quarry? Well, if, if they're actively mining it today. Then yes, it's a quarry. If they have these parcels that they own, that rock has been mined previously in their storage facilities. Is it a quarry or not?
Well. If they're using it for storage, they're pulling rock, they're putting rock in, pulling rock out, it's still, it's industrial use.
No, no, they just have stuff, they just have the leftovers there that they haven't.
I've seen small quarries spring up, get mined out for a summer, and the next year. I've seen small quarries spring up, get mined out for a summer, and the next year they're planted.
Yep. That's what I'm looking at on this list of realistically, the only thing I want to hit, if, if we were going to change anything at all. Is it had better be blatantly obvious and, and that's where I think you and I differ, disagree. One hundred percent of what is blatantly obvious. And that blatantly is a objective term. You know, it's no different than going into my teenager daughter's room and I think it's a mess and she thinks it's clean. That's what I'm saying is, I, I think your list is just way too big of, of what we're doing due diligence on. Um, and, and that's where I think some of like this agreement.
Well, we can shrink that. So I know that there's, there's some of the properties on B M C aggregate parcels. That, um, you know, I, I just put a, um, a circle around all their parcels. And said, well, that's industrial. They, it's, it's being taxed as commercial. They bought it because they intend to mine it. Um, so it should be zoned appropriately. That was my logic for putting them on the list. Um, you know. I'm sorry?
If I buy a car and stick it in the shed, I don't pay a license fee. It, it's the same thing. They bought the land that they made and at the time that they decide to mine it, if they're farming it now. Then it's, then they're farming it.
And all of the, I could be wrong, but all of those questions are probably answered in the already established guidelines from Cindy's office.
No, not from a zoning, not from a zoning perspective, because her office just shows that it's being taxed as commercial property.
And then our problem is.
Zoning.
The commercial, yes or no for zoning, and then what class of zoning is it in?
Right, and so my, my logic, and again, if, if we need to take the cropland part of B M C's. Holdings as an example and. Call that ag instead of industrial, uh, industrial heavy, I think it would be for, uh, for gravel pits. Um, if we need to do that to move this forward, then fine. But logically, I just want to communicate why I had encompassed that land. Is because A, it was being taxed as commercial. B, B M C bought it presumably for the purpose of mining it at some point. And C, zoning is there to manage not just what happened today. But what's supposed to happen in the future. If it's supposed to be gonna, gonna get mined in the future. Then let's zone it for industrial so that it's reserved for that industrial use.
Oh, we don't know they're going to.
See that, En- Enos already addressed this.
Explain what logic was. I, I, I'm. I, I have no interest in, in trying to, to, um, argue the point that it. Should initially be zoned industrial. That was my initial suggestion. That's why I sent this out a week ahead of time so that folks could look at it. That's why last week I asked if people had comments on it, um, so that we could go through those things.
There was an example made of the, of a racetrack and it was zoned that way 20 years ago. And it was the wrong thing to do. It might've seemed right at that date, but it was the wrong thing to do because 20 years later it's still zoned that way. And now it's causing us problems because it's inaccurate. I'm pretty sure that what I heard was. In my words, less is more. We want to change as little as we can to get this started and to get zoning in. Because we know there's always going to be changes to be made. And I have, my problem is, um, you know, C1, C2, C3, that's all splitting hairs and a lot of work. Where it's pretty much already zoned anyway. I, I don't, there's got to be an easy way to keep this really small. For now.
We can shrink the list. What I want to come up with is the logic that we would give. To Nycog. Nycog's the one that's gonna make the maps for us. So I would like to be able to give Nycog the logic that they can use. To assign these limited obvious areas with the appropriate zoning designation. So that they could get started on that and so that we can communicate to the public next week. That our intent, and again, there's going to be another public hearing. The maps are going to be published and we're going to have to send a letter to every resident in the county and say. Here's what the initial zoning is being proposed as. I think that logic should be. Part with the expectation that everything is ag except those obvious things that are. Clearly in operation today as not agriculture. Scrapyards, gravel pits, campgrounds, you know, what have you. Um, and that those things be assigned according to the zoning designations. That are written in the zoning ordinance. Thoughts on that logic? I mean, that, that's pretty much what we've been talking about since Enos.
I'm just gonna make comments out loud. They're not statements or rulings, just comments, just brainstorming. When we're using the word justification, everybody's worried about lawsuits and Nycog having pull and. There's a lot of different ways to justify our movements. And there's a lot of different definitions of legality. A justification is, hey, we're starting zoning. We want so countywide zoning. We know there's improvements to come. We don't know exactly how that looks or how long it's going to take. Okay, but our justification could be we're using. This as a start, starting point guideline. And we have our default ag that we know some of it's going to change in the future. To me, that's not liable. That's a progressive approach to justify what we're doing. Even if we know it's not perfect to start. No matter how accurate it is or how much we miss. We use the justification that we're using the assessor's office guidelines to start with, knowing it needs to be tailored.
How is that different than what I had said?
Because when, when, when I hear you talk, it, it feels like we've got to go through. I understand you said we're just talking about some of the bigger ones. Well, now the question is what's big, what isn't? And my, my thing is. Where do you start and stop, especially when you get the public involved? So what, what I'm saying is when I hear you talk about it, it feels like you want to get everything assigned detailed. Ahead of time.
No.
Even if you're trying to shrink it down to these few things, you're wanting them detailed. And, and I'm just missing that it has to be.
I'm not sure what you mean by detailed. What I'm, what I'm saying is that. The gravel, the, 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 the clear things, let me pull this up here. Quick clicking that way. So here's B M C aggregate. It's not ag. In fact, the, the land use code, if we look at the legend, N C R is explicitly. Um. Non-crop. Right, that's the tax use code that's assigned. That's clearly a gravel pit. What I'm suggesting is each of those parcels. Would be zoned as industrial heavy. Because if we say. On the one hand. We want to apply the zoning regulation to this township. Then the next thing that has to happen. The, is the assignment of the zones to the land. And I'm suggesting for the big obvious stuff like this, that it not be zoned ag. That it be zoned industrial heavy. Because that's the appropriate zone per the regulation that we're saying should apply to that land.
Okay, so a different approach. Again, I'm just talking out loud. So for that approach, if you have what you consider a few of them glaring obvious things. Which obviously from your list, some of them weren't quite right. I'm not picking, but.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just the stuff that you know for sure. If, if you wanted to make out a few example maps to show us or. I don't know, bring along with as an exhibition to this meeting. Does that hurt anything?
Well, I think it's appropriate, if, if we're going to tell the public that we are. Well, last week we voted to say we want the ordinance to apply. Across the entire county. That was part of the vote last week. We want the ordinance to apply countywide. As soon as we tell the public that, the very next question is, well, what does that mean? What, what, what's going to happen to my property, the property in the county? So I think it's appropriate for us to tell them our approach. If, you know, so if our recommendation stands after the second public hearing. If our recommendation stands to apply zone, the, the zoning ordinance countywide. That we intend that the initial zoning assignments would be ag. With the exception of these obvious things that we know are not ag. And here's the township map that shows those areas. Now, we wouldn't show that township map in this meeting because we wouldn't have it. But we would tell them our approach would be to zone everything ag except for the big obvious things that are not. And then over the course of time, everything else will come out in the wash. But for the second public hearing. We have to tell people what the initial assignments are going to be. We have to send them a letter to tell them what those initial assignments are. And we need to show them the township map so that they can see it.
And Jeff, well, that makes sense to me, but my approach is totally different. My approach is totally different. So just, just bear with me a second. Everything you're saying is, is something that has to be done sooner or later in my opinion, and it's all accurate, correct, right? And I agree with all of it. But that's the nuts and the bolts. Maybe you can call it fine tuning. You might disagree with that statement, and here's why. You start walking in with that, now everybody's talking about shingles and, and, and rules and government. First, we have to sell the public on the need. Or the desire, they have to be sold on countywide zoning. And it can't be by going in and dissecting everything right off the get-go. I believe the approach is the first meeting should focus less on dissecting land and more on. Why would you want countywide zoning? It's not because we got to make things accurate on a map. Nobody else gives a shit about that. Okay, what they have to be sold on is why do we need countywide zoning? For example, countywide zoning, zoning is a dirty word. Everybody's scared of it. Okay, so here's a statement. Here's an opening statement. We need countywide zoning because countywide zoning. Eliminates a hundred times as many issues as it creates. Countywide zoning gives you a say in your government. Countywide zoning gives you some light layers of protection. Then to do that, we have to follow up. With being a little bit more accurate with Worth County's land usages. I, I just think it makes it more palatable. Maybe it's just for me, maybe it's for this panel. But we have to sell it to the general public.
Yeah, I, I get.
I'm not sure that we got to have all the details before this first meeting. I don't think we have to have everything. It would be wonderful if we could have an outline perfectly and how that's going to go and how we're going to do it. And I'm not saying that can't be some of the discussion. I'm saying that I don't think we have the answers, so we can't try to give them an answer. We have to sell it first, get their input and tailor it.
I, I get the selling part. And I'm not suggesting that we're going to have all the details in this first meeting. I'm not suggesting that we're going to have all of these detailed assignments in this first meeting. What I'm suggesting is at the second meeting, we have to have the details. And if we have to have the details at the second meeting. That we should tell them what our thoughts are. As far as our approach on how we're going to come up with those details.
Okay.
The details being hit these obvious things. Everything else is ag. That's what we would tell them our intent is. At this meeting. The second meeting, and, and we would get their feedback on that. And then the second meeting is when we have to show them what the zone assignments. Would be in our recommendation. So that we can get feedback from that. Then we refine our recommendation and give it to the supervisors.
Right, so if you took just some of the glaring examples that everybody keeps talking about, the big obvious ones that we know. Now we're just looking at G I S and thinking, but that not only follows along with some of the, uh, assessors. Assignments as well as what's obvious, just a few of them. Make a map, show them an example that that's. An example of what we're looking at.
Yeah, I don't even think we need to make those maps. I think we just need to come up with the logic. That we're going to tell them that we intend to follow so that we can get feedback on that logic. Because it's the second meeting that we have to have the maps for people to see. We have to have had the letters sent out to everybody. Because the second meeting is where people are supposed to look at. The zone assignments that we're recommending and give us feedback on that. So that we can finalize our recommendation to give to the supervisors. This first, we just need to tell them, here's our thoughts on how we're going to come up with these assignments. And then give that information to Nycog so that they can start creating those maps. I, 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 you know, if, if we say in this first meeting that. We're thinking about zoning, what are your thoughts? And, you know, tell them about ag exemption and why zoning is, is going to make you feel warm and fuzzy or whatever. Um, but we don't tell them what our approach is going to be, then those maps, the letters. And the information that we're providing in that second meeting is all just going to come as a shock.
Well, that's, that's why I thought we was gonna, you were gonna shrink your list down to a couple of the very obvious things. And make it easy for the public.
I, I'm not even suggesting we give them the list. I'm, I'm suggesting we have to come up with the logic that we would use to make the initial assignments. Tell the people, this is the logic we're going to use. We're going to start with the assumption that everything is ag with the exception of the big obvious stuff that we know is not ag.
Yeah, and then there's your obvious that's not ag, okay? I'll just put my two cents in, um. So all three supervisors, well, I'm sorry, two of the three said that, yes, they, obviously we need zoning. Or they, they think we need zoning. One, what, didn't think we.
Said that yes, they obviously we need zoning or they they think we need zoning, one what didn't think we did, but all three of them. And I understand it's different, but all three of them referred back to the assessor's list. I completely get zoning is diff zoning um classification is different than assessor classification. But if we just, if we used that Tuesday at the meeting and said, we are going to base. The zoning on the assessor's information. And then it will be classic, we have to clap, you know, come out and tell them it has to be classified in zone standards. But. I think if you just use that. Anybody. You're gonna eliminate a lot of questions right there because they're gonna immediately say, well, I'm zone egg, so that's gonna, you know. Where that's just what I'm looking at, the stuff I wrote down from the the supervisors was, you know. Use the assessors and keep it simple, um, I understand Jeff, what you're saying as far as. You know, down the road at the second meeting, we 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 have to have those those um zones classified for zoning purposes. But we don't even know if we're gonna get to a second meeting yet.
Right, and can I add to that a little bit, Justin? Okay, Jeff keeps worrying about logic, okay, so the logic we're applying is using the assessor's list as a starting point. Knowing we need to fine tune it, I don't even know by the second meeting, we gotta have all this classified. Just to let them know that would have to be.
We do have to have, that's a part, that's a part of the public hearing requirement, Todd. Is we have to show them, we can't give our recommendation to the supervisors. Until the public has had an opportunity to review the zoning assignments and provide their.
For this first meeting, though, the logic behind. How we're starting is really all they need, knowing what's gonna happen at the such as foreshadowing. It doesn't have to all be hammered out yet. It just have to have a start in how we're planning on doing this.
And I agree with what Todd said earlier. You know, the reasons why we want the rest of the county zoned and, you know, like say, we're we're trying to eliminate the. The bad, we're protecting you, we're not trying to handcuff you. And get that in this first meeting because. To use what David said, you have three hundred people show up and immediately two ninety nine raise their hands, they're against it. I'm like him and I might just have to vote against it, then I, you know, I don't know.
I I agree a hundred percent, and that's why I had on, you know, on our next agenda item. Is to discuss what kind of stuff do we wanna point out in this meeting? In this first public meeting, that's what I have on the screen right now.
Okay, do you want examples? Is that what you're getting at, examples of why we would want zoning?
Well, what I what I wanna. First of all, I think we, going back to when we started the discussion when the supervisors left. We have to revisit reconsider. The vote. That happened last month, not last month, last week. That two-part vote that said, apply zoning countywide, make everything ag. So I was suggesting that we reconsider that vote, we divide those two things. We vote on, should we extend zoning? Across countywide, that'd be one question, the other question is. What is the logic that we want to use? To give to NiCOG so that they can start making the maps for the second meeting and that we can communicate to the um. Uh, to the public next week, what our approach is. The approach. As I last heard it is, we're gonna start with the assessor's tax data. Everything that has a C behind it, we're gonna look at it and determine, is it a C one, C two, CR? Industrial light or industrial heavy? And we're gonna. Make that, and 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 if it's. I'm sorry?
Well, let me stop you for just a second. That's where one of the places I have a problem. One, one second, we're talking about just listing, okay, I I think I might answer my own question to start this out, we was only gonna have a few examples. And then later on, we're gonna go through the C one, C two, C three.
We don't even have to have a few examples. I mean, we can use examples, like I've been using examples since last week of gravel pits and scrap yards, very clearly not ag. So we look at the assessor data and it says it has a C behind it. Then we have to apply a C one, C two, CR, IL or IH to it. And we would just simply communicate that approach.
Right.
That's the approach that we.
There's a game plan, not actually going through it yet, right?
So that people at the meeting say, okay, I understand the direction these guys are going. They expect at the next meeting, we're gonna show them, here's the result. Of that logic, here's the maps, and everybody would have gotten a letter at home saying. Your parcels blobbity blah 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 are zoned ag or what have you. Because we have to show them the maps, we have to give them a letter, have a public hearing after those two or. As 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 um as part of those two things. Then we can refine whatever our recommendation is to give to the supervisors.
But in this first meeting. In this first meeting. Do we, would we have to identify that? So last week we voted to call it egg, okay? But at the at this presentation Tuesday. Couldn't we tell them that we are going to? I gotta figure out how to word this, that we're going to. Use the assessor's list as a starting point. Um, and just stop right there as far as Tuesday, I mean, not stop right there, but you know, to give that, okay, that's what they're gonna go with this. Um. I don't know, I guess. I don't know if that means we would have to change the motion from last week just to get. Just, I mean, after Tuesday, yes, then. We might have to change some stuff, but just to get us to the meeting, does that have to change?
I I think so, yes, because last week was to say. Everything is gonna be ag, there are no exceptions, so we cannot. Um, I think go into the public meeting without changing that, we can't go into the public meeting and say. We're gonna do something different. Because that's what we voted on was everything's gonna be ag, so. That's why I'm suggesting we need to revisit reconsider that vote, break it into two things. We wanna zone everything countywide and our approach for the initial assignments are gonna be to start with the assessor. Uh, tax records, everything with a C is gonna be looked at, and if it's obvious that it's a one of these. Um, activities that should be zoned as C one, two, R. Or industrial that that's what's gonna get initially assigned. And that's the logic that we would give to NiCOG so they can start working on those maps. I mean, if that's what we're gonna tell them. Then we have to change the vote from last week that said, we're just gonna apply ag everywhere.
But I'm I'm not ready to take a vote on that, I need to gather some more information and I don't see why it can't wait. Till the public meeting.
What are you, what are we gonna tell them at the public meeting, Todd?
Tell them we're trying to get countywide zoning and the reasons why. I don't know.
By the time we get to the second meeting, well, we have changed and made some exceptions. If you're not willing to hold up on the public meeting. Get everything done, so now we have the final map that we're gonna go through reading one and reading two with. And have it all identified. Then I I can see the re-vote, I can see making an amendment, I can see a lot of different things.
Well, we're we're only, we're required to have. A public meeting to inform the public. What our intent is so that we can get feedback on that intent. And then we're required to create a recommendation and give that to the supervisors. What I'm suggesting is that we give.
We can do our meeting, we can get the public input, we can move ahead with exactly as it is. We can amend it after the public meeting to do what needs to be done.
I don't think that it is. Number one, I don't think that it's fair to the public to tell the public. We're gonna, we wanna zone the county and we intend to make everything ag. When everything that I've heard tonight is that's not likely what we're planning to do. I think it's appropriate that we are open with the public. They could be listening or watching this video, hearing us say our intent is to. Start with the tax records, look at everything that's a C, and if it's obviously it's in operation as. One of these various things that we're going to assign it according to the rules of the regulation, the zoning regulation. Then that's what we ought to tell them.
Yeah, exactly, we're gonna tell them what's. We know that it needs to be updated, we know that there's changes to be made, but if we have to as I assign it. That's why we had our motion to be a default egg until we can update it, and as long as we're telling them our intent. I don't see it as an issue. For now.
The issue is. The record shows that the zoning commission voted to do an initial blanket ag assignment.
To get it started.
That is, that was the vote, so that's our course of action.
Okay.
So unless we change that. How do we, how do we start with the assessor's tax information? And. And and classify these other, these obvious things, something other than ag, because that's contrary to what the vote was.
Well, unless I'm missing something that was our vote, and if we don't get it changed, that's how it's gonna go into this first meeting. We communicate with the public our intent. Well, it can get revoked or changed after the first meeting, whether we get it perfect or not, doesn't matter.
That's what I'm suggesting that we do is we change.
Well, I'm not ready to do that. I need more input, I need more research so that I can be comfortable with my vote.
I don't get you, you're, you're, you're saying on the one hand that we should tell the public. That we're gonna start with the assessor data. And identify these obvious things through the C code and then assign them a zone. You're saying that that's what we should tell people on Tuesday, right?
If I understood it right, it had to be zoned legally, we had to assign it a designation, whether it was for one day, one week. Or another fifty years, we legally had to make a designation. We have a default as ag, so that's what we went with, the intent was. That that may get revisited after the meetings. We all knew. That A one egg may not fit perfectly and it may need to be updated. Whether it's as it arises in the future, one parcel at a time over the next ten years or at the next meeting. This meeting is to inform the public of our intent and gather information and go from there. If we don't have it perfect before then, well, we didn't have much time to get it perfect.
We're.
I'm sorry.
Nobody's suggesting that it be perfect, Todd.
I'm not saying the map's being perfect, I'm saying our. Our rulings or our intent.
All I'm suggesting is that our, our. Our. Information to the public on Tuesday. Should be. Accurate.
I believe the accuracy is in our intent, not in our maps.
Take, take maps out of the question, maps aren't even.
So we're looking at illustration, how are we gonna do this? We don't have that completely done yet. And I don't see us getting to that answer tonight, and I'm not gonna keep arguing about it. Uh, that's how I feel, I'm not ready to make a vote on that yet. Cause I haven't convinced myself, nor has anybody else convinced me of how that's gonna work. I wanna do a little bit more research before I cast a vote in any other direction than what we've already stated, not saying it's gotta stay that way, it's perfect. I just haven't heard or seen the clear path to change our motion at this point.
So using the assessor's data. Starting with the Cs. Looking at those parcels, identifying the obvious stuff that's in operation and making those assignments is not a clear path. That's all I'm suggesting that we should communicate to the public on Tuesday.
We communicate that without changing the the motion, but whatever.
That's right.
Well, that's my point too, then, let's not change the motion, let's get to the next damn meeting and worry about it, that's what you just said. That's what I heard, I I why are we arguing about this? We don't, I don't know.
Going into Tuesday and telling people that we intend to uh assign everything ag. I don't think is an accurate state.
That's not what we're telling them, we're telling them that we temporarily assigned it that because it legally needed a land designation. And our intent is to become more accurate over time as needed.
That's not accurate. Before the second meeting, we have to have made the assignments.
For the second one, you do, you need to have the maps, you need to make the assignments. And now everything's assigned A one.
Maybe the first meeting's too soon, I don't know.
And after the. Click hitting, we can tell them our intent is is to look at the auditors to look at. There will be some reclassification, but everything starts as an A one because that's the least offensive default. Before it's changed from A one to something else, they're going to get a letter. We're gonna show the maps, it's all gonna be done going forward.
Our intent is to make all of the townships the same across the county. According to our current. Going by our current ruling, our current in place rules. For laws or whatever, they're not all up to date anyway, there's a whole bunch of stuff that needs to get updated. Or changed or. If, okay, just more discussion, more question, back to um the assessor's office or whatever, um. Don't they already have some maps of how the land is currently set up? Maybe not completely zoned in detail, but don't they already have something?
Yes, it's land use codes.
Okay.
That's what I had pulled up a little while ago. That's this. Popping down like that. That's this list. So when you turn on that button. All of the land. Is designated with one of these codes. So on this item for the public hearing. In particular. Five C.
Okay, when it pops up, then I'm muted. I can't see my little mic, you know.
I can see you. I can hear you.
But yeah, I was talking with me muted, but you know, to me, Jeff, uh, you're spot on. I mean. It's likely not a hundred percent accurate default to ag or something. That's what we're telling the public. We're going to default ag. We know this is not accurate. We will define it going forward. Ninety-nine percent of the people that are at the meeting are ag people that are going to be ag. So they understand what ag is. The businesses that have an industrial property. And I'm going to use the vehicle and hydro site right on the north side of Crafton. It is on the outside of the city limits of Crafton. We know you're going to zone it, or we should zone it as, in fact, would appreciate being zoned as. Because it's currently in news and an industrial property. Action to having that. So the businesses, it's, it's all the, the, the residents that are going to freak out about what is zoning giving. And what you're stating there is exactly right. The way our, the way we're proceeding is. And I'm, that's where I'm, I'm having a hard time, Jeff, of understanding of. Why you, what do we need to change? Reinform them. Yeah, we know we're not accurate.
All I'm saying, David, is that. I, I, I don't want to give the impression. In the first public meeting that the zoning commission's intent is to zone everything as ag. Which is what the vote was last week, which is the approach that on record is the approach that we're taking. And then turn around. Before the second meeting, publish a set of maps and send letters to everybody that shows. Places are not ag because those two things are then contradictory.
Well, it's contradictory if you don't have them assigned at the first one. And say, these are, these are the ones that we have set are going to be commercial and we're not going to change going on. So either way, you're controversial and either way, you're contradictory.
No, all I'm saying is that for, for this item. When it says inform everybody of the approach that we intend to make with regard to zoning assignments. What we would say is our intent is to leverage the assessor's tax data. That identifies commercial property. We intend to look at that, those parcels. And if it's obvious that it's. A commercial activity or industrial activity, our intent will be. To assign a commercial or industrial zone to that land. That's our intent. That's what we would say on Tuesday. We would give that logic to NiCOG so that they could then start making those assignments on maps. So that we publish that stuff and send people the letters for the second public meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's communicating intent. That is our justification.
Yes, so. If that's our intent, what I'm saying is. Technically, we have to reconsider the vote from last week because the vote from last week didn't say that's our intent. If we're saying that's our intent today, then we have to change what was voted on last week because the vote last week formally.
I personally think that is, I understand how black and white you're thinking, but our intent might change a couple more times.
Yes, it probably will, but we got to tell people what it is currently.
Yeah, currently we decided to zone it as default egg and use the, the. Um. Current zoning from the assessor's office as a tool to try to update it. Cause we know it's not finished. We communicated our intent.
And so that's all.
You can put on a big letters on a screen that this is the way it was and this is the way it is, but this is what we're trying to do. We communicated our intent. I don't. We're not fooling anybody. We're not lying to them. We're not. We're stuck on a motion that. I don't see a need to change at this point and.
But Todd, I, I, I think we're all in agreement on the approach.
We're pretty much, yeah.
Right? I think we're all in agreement there. My point is that approach is different than what was voted on last week. We made it, we took a vote. We can't just have a conversation and say. We're going to change our mind. The vote was a formal vote for a blanket ag. We're all in agreement tonight saying we're not going to do a blanket ag. We're going to take this different approach.
We have the different approach and we have it outlined. These properties are the ones that we are going to change. That's when we change the motion.
Yeah, I don't see the reason that it can't change at or after the next meeting. The same as changing it now. Just we have a little more time to look into it.
We change it. We need to change it to the final of. Damn, these, it's going to be everything's A1 except the included list. Here they are.
Okay, so.
You want to, if you want to do that tonight, let's do that, that list. Here they are. We're done. I, I'm good then.
I, I don't think, we, we don't need to make the list. I, I just want to make certain because it, again. And, you know, Todd calls it black and white and, and there are certain things that are black and white. And this is what I want to, uh, guard against. So there's a vote on record that the zoning commission said, we're going to apply a blanket ag to everything. Put a period there. Tuesday, when we sit there and say our intent. Is to use the assessor's tax data, everything with a C behind it. Look at it and see if it's obviously a commercial operation or industrial operation that's in place today. And then we're going to assign the appropriate zone designation to it. If we say that Tuesday. I just want to make certain nobody's going to throw a hissy fit and say, no, that's not what the commission voted on.
Okay, okay. Let me, let me add to that, Jeff, because I, I hear you. Our intent of our original motion. Was to imply, to get countywide zoning.
And apply a blanket ag.
That is how we did it. Our intent was to get countywide zoning. That's how we did it at the time. We know it can change. We're planning on changing it. That was our step one. The meetings are public input to see. We want, this is where we, this is what we did to get here. This is where we want to go. I mean, if it has to be spelled out for everybody that way, or if there's a question, what was our intent? Our intent was to get the county uniform.
I'm just trying to guard against somebody throwing a hissy fit because there's a difference between. The approach that we're going to tell them on Tuesday and the vote that was taken last week.
The vote last week was, sorry, David, go ahead.
I, I, I don't see it as a difference. I don't see a black and white here, Jeff. I, I'm seeing all the gray of. Put everything A1. Now we're going to proceed with public. We're going to proceed looking at it. We're going to proceed. With all kinds of intent of what do we need to do? Then we're going to come back and we're going to give you. Here's the fine.
Our intent was countywide zoning and to accomplish that, we felt we had to A1 egg zone it. Knowing full well that we had to move forward and tailor it. By reassigning and being more accurate with zoning and we're asking for public input.
Put an A1 on it and I have to put AC something on it and I have to show them. That's where my whole point has been from the beginning. We're starting A1. What is our intent? Our intent is to zone it properly. Question is, is where are you? What is blatantly obvious? We still, we're asking for the public input. Does that like the public to tell me what's blatantly obvious? I, so I, I'm. I guess.
Everybody good with that?
I, I didn't, I didn't catch that, Jeff. I'm sorry.
Oh, I typed on the screen. Text. That says. We're on item five C that says we're going to inform everyone on the approach that we intend to take. That we intend to start with the accessor, the assessor tax data showing parcels that have a C assignment, then look at those. And any that are clearly commercial or industrial activity will be assigned the appropriate zone designation. Per the existing county zoning ordinance. Then the next sub-bullet says remainder, um, or reminder of ag exemption. And it says everything else will default to ag. Everybody good with saying that in the meeting on Tuesday? I can't hear you, David.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. That, that to me is where we're at as a commission.
That's what I've heard everybody say tonight. I just wanted to make that clear that. That's what we're going to say on Tuesday so that, and, and I, I typed it so everybody can look at it and everybody's bobbing their head saying yes. Wanted to take that formal step because again, that seems contrary to what the vote was last week. And I didn't want to get sideways with doing this versus what that vote was.
And, and that's, that's where I kind of disagree with you. I, I don't see where this is counter.
Well, because the vote just simply said, we're going to put a blanket ag on everything, period.
That's what we're going to do. That's the starting date, point A. Our intent to say is if there's something that can't be, well, then we can sure talk about it, but. See, everything's A1 unless proven otherwise.
If you can look at this. Any input on what we should be covering? Things that we explicitly want to say?
You talk to NiCOG.
Um, so. NiCOG says take them a week or so to produce the maps. Should be relatively easy. If we have.
Writing everything to them to produce that map or are they taking information that they're, they want to be the ones producing the map?
They'll, they'll take the logic that we give them. Because they've got access to all of that. All of the GIS data and all of the assessor codes and data. They've already got that stuff. So Matt says if we give him the logic, then he can. Apply that logic and create township maps for us. So I hope is that he would be able to provide that to us. Before our meeting on March 2nd. So that we can take a look at that stuff. Make any, um, changes, you know, identify anything that we want them to change. And then he could make those changes fairly quickly. And so I'm thinking it would be mid to late March that, well, the mid to late March for this second public hearing, when we would be able to have maps that we sign off on, letters crafted and sent out to everybody.
Well, that's, that's what my question is, is you're going to give, you're going to give NiCOG parameters to deliver to this map. Is that easier than us giving NiCOG, these are the seas and, and how we want them and just have them in?
Well, I think it would be faster to give it to them. They produce it, they would have maps to us by the time we're scheduled to meet on March 2nd. And that, that way we could get the next public hearing mid to late March.
I would like to have the maps in the minimum of a week before we have the meeting.
I'm sorry?
I would like to have a minimum of a week between the time I get the maps and we meet. Give me time to go through the map.
That, a week before we have our meeting?
Right, so if we get the map on, we'll just say he doesn't get it to us until April or until March 1st. I'm not comfortable meeting on March 2nd. I would like to put it out on March 9th. I want a week between the time I get the map and the time we meet.
Okay.
Look at it.
Right. Well, yeah, I, I don't think that's a, that's a problem. I still think that's a faster path than us trying to identify everything, create it, then give it to them, get the maps. Cause we're still going to need to have them produce the maps and time for us to review it no matter what. And I just think that they can, they can create the maps a lot faster based on the logic that we give them. As opposed to us making the list, then giving it to them, creating the maps and then looking at it.
Just want to make sure we're all going down saying that and I'm fine with that. It's just from the time I get the map, I, I don't want to have a map on a, on a Monday and we're meeting on Wednesday. That's just not enough time for me.
Right, yeah, yeah, no, that's, I understand. Did you, did you, um, did you see a faster way for us to identify the things to them, for them to create the map?
No, I don't, I don't know as if there is a fast way to do it.
So I'll have them produce the maps, get it to us and we'll key off of whatever that date is. You know, whenever we get the, the maps from them, then we'll just, we'll reach out to everybody and set the date for the next meeting. So it's not likely, you know, even if I give you what's today, today's the today's possible they could have the maps by the 23rd. I'll have to ask Matt how quick he could put that together. But if we get the maps by the 23rd, then our March 2nd meeting, if we don't get the maps by the 23rd, then we'll have to set the next meeting based on when we get them.
And I'm, to be honest, I'm more concerned about a weekend, having a weekend to review them rather than the whole seven days, you know? Get it on Friday at five and I've got the whole weekend to review it. And I, I, you know, because Dana, you know, she works in town, Todd works in town. It's, it's a weekend where we're going to have time to probably redo this. If I get it on Monday for the, for the meeting Wednesday, that is static.
Right, okay.
But I'm not speaking for other people.
Okay. I've made that note that we want to make certain that we've got a, a weekend for review of the maps before the next meeting. So we'll set the next meeting based on, based on timing of the maps. Anything else, anything that's missing or we we're not comfortable with on this topic of the agenda for the Tuesday meeting?
How much are you planning to allow public comment?
Should we do, we, we did, we do three minutes or five minutes per person when we did the wind ordinance?
I thought it was six, but I could be wrong.
I don't see where it says public comment.
Oh yeah, this, this is just what we would tell them. It's just, it's talking points more than agenda, I'm sorry. But we need to figure out, certainly we want to give them this information. This is the information I think that we want to communicate to them. And then it's public comment, period. And so how much time do we want to give folks? You know, this is just telling people what it is that we're doing.
And I don't think we'd want to spend a lot of time on that, you know? Me almost could print it off and hand it to them as they walk through the door.
Well, good. I don't have to probably print a couple hundred of them.
Two bucks. Four bucks, well, it's, it's two cents a page. You know, it's, it's a page for printing and a page for the paper. You know, so 200 for, for, four bucks. I mean, it's not a big deal out of the, or the county budget.
Right. So how much time do we want to give everybody?
I've got in the, the three to five minute range. You know, unfortunately, they found ways around that last time. Can I have his five minutes?
Great.
And we also let them, once we got through the list, had them a chance to come back to follow up with more time if they needed it.
Yep. Yeah, I, I think it's appropriate that you let everybody say their full piece. You know, if it takes them two or three times at the microphone to do so by giving everybody an opportunity, you know, some people just want to come say their piece and, you know, maybe they want to leave. So I, I think we don't want to give somebody an opportunity to have the floor for half an hour. You know, if they got 30 minutes worth of things to say, they gotta wait, you know, say five minutes worth and then give everybody else a chance to talk first.
I think if we do that, we need to impose it that way. Can I have so and so's five minutes? And it's sorry, no. Go to the end of the line, we'll get through the full line, then you come back.
Okay, so hard stop at five minutes?
The, the other people agree with me on that, so I, I, yeah, I like that. It's that, that got a little we learn.
Okay. What else? Any other discussion?
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
Meeting is adjourned. Thanks everyone.
Thank you.
Bye.